All right, let's get things going. Good morning, thank you. We've got some guests with us today and I'll be explaining their presence here in just a moment. But let's start with the most important things. Let's have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance if you all will stand with me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for a chance to come together to handle county business. We thank you for those that are involved in one way or another, whether as an elected official, or as an employee, or as a taxpayer, or as a volunteer citizen in numerous organizations. We just pray that you would guide us through this agenda, that you would give us the wisdom that we need to make the right decisions. We thank you for those that serve in all capacities. We just turn this agenda over to you. We ask your blessing and protection, watch care on our first responders here within our county, as well as our servicemen and women abroad, wherever they may be, whether it's here in the States or long, long ways away. We are grateful to have you here with us today, Lord, to just make this meeting accomplish what it needs to, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every king and justice for all. All right, I think I've got everybody's microphone on. I want to tell you guys, I got two compliments from people that watch your show on TV or on their computer and they said they could hear everybody, so good job. I like it when they tell me that and I don't like it when they can't hear us. So keep up the good work. I know that everybody's mic is on because I turned it on myself. Welcome everyone to all of our guests and elected officials. This is our first meeting of the month of May, today the 13th of May, and a few minutes after nine o'clock. We will begin with item number one. That's our time for public comments. If you have anything that you would like to ask or mention to the commissioners that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. I don't have any written requests, but we don't have to have a written request. And I think I know why everybody's here this morning, so I'm not expecting anything, but this is your chance nonetheless. All right, we'll move to item number two. We need to consider and possibly approve minutes from our last meeting back in April, three weeks ago.
Motion to approve minutes.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker to approve that set of minutes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor of approval of those minutes say aye.
Aye.
Item number three, we've got a full row there, if you will note, of some nice folks that do a wonderful job in the background that you all need to know about and that I'd like to give some attention to, but we also need to accomplish something for them. I've got here members of the Titus County Child Welfare Board. Some of these ladies have been serving for over 20 years, I think that I just heard. And it has recently come to their attention that there are a few members that, not because of oversight, not because they intentionally didn't do it, but simply because they were not aware, they were made aware by the Texas Council of the Child Welfare Boards that they need to have each and every member of our local board here approved by the Commissioners' Court. Some of them were already approved many, many years ago. And the way that they get on this board is that they are nominated by either someone from the outside or someone within this board. They go through background checks, et cetera, et cetera, and they are approved and welcomed onto this board. But the Texas Council would like for the Commissioners' Court, because we're so wise and knowledgeable and we can look at these people and say that they are worthy of serving on the Titus County Child Welfare Board. But I want to, you can look and see who most of these people are, but let me tell you who some of the others are. We have Jennifer Wildman is the chair. John Vineyard, who's not here, is the vice chair. Janet Sharp is here as our treasurer. Carrie Nichols, not here, as secretary. We have Jan Greenley, Becky Cromer, Kim Schumate, Jennifer Lied, Dr. Bobby Cooper, and Sally Conroy is in the midst of being approved. She's undergoing, oh, what's the right word? The background checks, et cetera. And so they are here today, in case you want any of them to address you. Most of you probably know most of these ladies. But in order to satisfy what they need, what we need to do today is those names that I've just read to you, we need to approve them because they are an arm of Titus County. As the Child Welfare Board, they serve, obviously, all kinds of situations here in our county, but they are an extension of Titus County and the Commissioners' Court. So what I would like to ask you to do, unless you have questions again, or would like any of these ladies to speak, we need a motion to approve each and every member of the Titus County Child Welfare Board so that we can inform the Texas Council that this has officially been done.
Do you like a motion to approve?
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve each and every member, as well as Sally, who is pending, to be officially blessed by the Titus County Commissioners' Court as members of the Child Welfare Board. That's the motion.
Second then.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, with that, we're done with the official aspect. I would like to just tell you, thank you for what you do. You deal with some tough situations that needs knowledge and compassion and experience and what you do, we probably wouldn't be any good at, so we are grateful that you all are willing to do it, especially those of you that have served for so many years. Keep up the good work. Thank you for coming today. We probably could have done this just by reading a list of names, but I wanted these guys to see who you are and tell you thank you, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out.
Y'all are welcome to go. We have some exciting things ahead. You're welcome to stay. You don't even want to hear the roadwork status? All right, with that, we will move on to item number four, and that's report from commissioners regarding roadwork status and what's going on in the precincts as far as roadwork.
Precinct one?
Yeah, precinct one.
Precinct one. We did a mile of seal coating, which is new to most of us and didn't know, I didn't know existed until Roger come. It's a lot, a lot better system. I knew that, but I didn't know it was cheaper than using coal makes what we'd been doing since I've been here, so it was quite interesting. And we are scheduled to do some more this week. Hopefully the weather knocked us out this week. But anyway, it's been interesting and that's, other than the potholes are driving us crazy with all this rain, all of us, so other than that trees, we, the little rains and storms we had are the wind. Anyway, it's been a boring week, other than that.
Where was that mile? What road?
1435 and 1450. It's a little.
Were you able to get that whole mile in one day or did it take several days?
One mile, yeah. We quit early. Had a little problem with one of the machines. One of the machines we didn't replace had a little problem, the old chipper, the, it's old, been there 20, 30 years.
Was this a joint effort? Was this just your guys or did you utilize the whole?
No, the whole.
Okay.
Whole court.
So all four commissioners and all crews worked together to do this?
Yeah, it takes all of us. Well, it'll take about, they said, somebody said a minimum of 10. We had, what, about 13 and it took everybody? And, but it's going, it's better if we could have about 13, 14 on each one. And there's only, what, 16 of us? So that's, yeah, it works. It's a long day. We're working 10 hours a day, so they're going from six to 10, so it's a long day. Hopefully, I think we'll run out of money before we run out of, you know, time to seal coat.
Were you pleased with the end results?
That, no, yeah, I was, I was quite impressed.
All right.
Looks good. So we had a lot of storm damage, so we did a lot of pothole repair and a lot of ditch cleaning. We had some flooding issues and some ditches need to be cleaned out. And like I said, my crew went out last Tuesday and we seal coated all day and it was really interesting. Enjoyed that, so good. We're getting that down pat, so we'll get a lot done this summer.
Is this some in addition to Commissioner Riddles?
I helped his crew. We all worked together. It was, almost everybody from the whole county worked there. A couple guys in a couple precincts had to put in some culverts, emergency issues that day. So it worked out really good. And we are cleaning up some storm damage and some trees today and we're going to get back. My crew's going to work the rest of this week, chip sealing in precinct one, so we should get a lot done. And I've been getting my materials in for chip sealing in my precinct. I ordered 504 tons of number five pea gravel for the rock and we're going to get our roads repaired. We've got some soft spots we've been digging out and fixing so we can start chip sealing in just a few weeks, probably.
All right, good deal.
All right, number three?
Yeah, we've had a lot of road closures and stuff over the last few weeks. This past week, we closed quite a few of them because of the flooding and all that. We had people going through the water and, you know, I don't know why they want to go through the water and, you know, take a chance, but they're there. But we've put a cupboard in on there over there on 3925, we're on Ranch Road, and we've been just chasing potholes and storm damage and stuff, trees and stuff. And so we're staying pretty busy and we didn't go out there with the, out of them, other than we had to put that cupboard in. But of course, I'm a man down, but we're going to try to, we're going to help them tomorrow and everything. Try to get the.
Anybody have, you still have some roads that are closed?
No, they're all, they're all open now.
Everything's back open.
They had quite a bit of water, especially in the wide old bottom part.
We didn't lose any roads?
No, 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 sir. Not that I know of right now. But they have, we had some issues with some roads, but we caught them beforehand. We got a lot of ditches we've got to get cleaned out and we got a lot of maintaining to do, a lot of culverts we got to dig out. I went over this morning on Neville Chapel Road and they was, well, that water went plum over it, but water was everywhere though, that short of time. I just asked people to bear with me.
Number four?
Like everybody said, we have been doing a lot of patching because of the rain and whatnot. We have got things inland to start working on 4315. I've got nine culverts sitting out here waiting to get put in, waiting for the weather to get dry enough and the material to get dry enough to put them in. And we, at one time Thursday, I had seven or eight roads that I had closed in my precinct. Was a little concerned with the new tank that we put in about a month back. Went over to it, water was, it normally gets over the road there when we have a rain like we did, and it was about that much of the tank that was, was still showing, water flowing through it. So we were well pleased with it, had a little washing on the side of it, but nothing major, everything was, and everybody out in that area was pleased because there's, there's about, I think it's eight or nine houses in between two creeks there that if it gets up like that and gets over it, they're all blocked in. I meant there's no way out, in or out. And so they, I talked to several of them the other day and they were all pleased that that one stayed open. They can go out that way to the north if they have to. We had several trees down. We've got, had three more this morning that we had to push out of the road over the weekend. And they're picking them up today and I'll try to get through with that. And then we're going out, a couple of the guys are going out tomorrow to help precinct one seal coat. And then I've got a, me and a couple of the other two are going to try to clean some ditches and all over on that 4315 where we can get ready to start replacing those culverts over there. So we have got a big week ahead of us. They're giving pretty weather all week, so we've got a big week ahead of us to try to, try to get some things done.
That tank you replaced, was it, it was bigger than the, what was there before?
One that was in there was a seven foot and this one was a 10 foot six that we put in.
Needed every bit.
So it's carrying, carrying a lot more water and that's one reason it didn't get over the road. Everybody that's lived out there for any length of time said that with the rain like we had, said it would have been over the road had, had we not done that, so.
All right. Okay, very good. Item number five, consider and possibly approve a special training trip for the JP1 clerks. And Judge Agan is here to tell you about an opportunity that he's got that sounds good to me, but I couldn't approve it for him. He's going to need your approval. He may need a little bit of additional money. Judge?
Good morning. Thank you Commissioners' Court for allowing me to speak to you this morning and listen to the request I have. I have two clerks in my office. One's been here for a year now. Linda, I mean Pam and Linda, she's our new one, she's been here since this past December. We're constantly in a learning phase here, being new. Pam's already been able to go to new clerks training last year. The second training is unavailable. It's kind of like getting tickets to a concert. If you're not there at midnight over one to sign up for training, you're going to miss it. They're generally in Galveston, the South Bay area. What I'm here today for is that our training center has also trained our clerks as well as new judges. And they have mentors that are clerks that gives advice, answers questions and, and we've had in the past few months, several new question, questions come up that, you know, it's kind of tough to answer, to be correct on. And they have utilized these mentors. And the mentors that they've chosen, the first part of this year, are in Hondo, Texas, under Judge House. And the administrators are, I mean, the clerks are Theresa Koch and Dorothy Torres. They've been very helpful in answering questions and giving assistance and guidance and, and the day-to-day processes that have come about. It's something new every day, every day. What I'm requesting is to accept an invitation from those clerks down there that are certified with the training center as mentors and trainers to allow my clerks to go and train with them for two days. It's to be a three-day trip, come back, go down on a Thursday, hopefully get there, depending on traffic, before noon. And then train throughout the day, the next day with the clerks and half a day Friday and then travel home. The clerks won't be going at the same time. I'll be keeping one here to keep the office open at those particular times. No dates have been set yet for the actual training. We need to get this approved and clarified with clerks down there that, what times and when they are available to do this training for us. The total training for both clerks, if both were to go down at the same time, which they're not, would be a total of $1,541. That's including meals, mileage, and hotel. My budget in my training has, is significant enough to be able to cover this at this time. The reason we're asking for this is because it's not a standard training facility that they're going to. It's just these ladies are, got 25 years of experience and they're very helpful and they've invited us down with their judge approval. So with that, I'm asking y'all's consideration and approving this special training for my clerks.
Have either of those clerks actually been to a formal training?
Pam has gone to new clerk training back last year when, I think, if I remember correctly, she hired on like in May of last year and she was able to go to new clerks training, which is in Rockdale. That's where we'll try to send Linda to, which is in July. But she has no, no formal training at all yet until the new clerks training in Rockwall, which is a three-day training itself, but it's, you know, goes over a lot of things. The whole state of Texas goes over as far as their clerk duties.
So Linda will make, your proposal with Linda, go to the mentoring and then come back again and go to three days training in Rockdale?
Depending, yes, it can be done, if we can do it that way, or she can go to the mentoring training first. Either way, it's a win-win situation, in my view, is if they go to this mentor training before they go to the actual training itself for new clerks, she'll know what they're talking about. She'll be able more better to understand what they're teaching. If she goes after the training for you, she'll be able to understand more so in that way too. So it's a, you know, it's a win-win as far as.
But you feel like she needs to go to both?
I think it would be helpful, yes, her and Pam both. I mean, Pam's more criminal, in the criminal side of it, and she's not as proficient as, I guess you could say, in civil side of it, because, you know, we pretty much have to concentrate on what their duties are, but we do cross train and, you know.
You mentioned leaving Thursday. Did you mean to leave Wednesday? Spend a full day on Thursday?
They'd leave Thursday morning and train, depending on the traffic getting there. This is in.
Hondo, Texas?
Hondo, Texas. It's outside of San Antonio, I believe. Getting through Austin's what the, you don't know if. But if they, if they get there in time, they'd start that Thursday evening and then all day Friday. No, I guess it would be, they'd be training all day Thursday and then come back Friday evening.
So leave Wednesday?
We'll leave Wednesday morning, yes.
Leave Wednesday morning, train part of Wednesday afternoon, all day Thursday?
And then half a day Friday.
So half day, full day, half day?
Yes.
And then travel home Friday afternoon?
That is, and you know, be honest, that's depending on what traffic's like, that Wednesday morning when they're going through. It might be later in the evening, but you don't know.
Did you say you have a budget?
I have.
All the training?
Yes, yes, as of.
You have a one in July?
Okay, one in July. She hasn't signed, she has signed up for, I don't have the cost on it, but I think it's going to be, it's, to go down there for, and Rockwall, of course, mileage is not going to be near as expensive. Right now, the training allowance that I have at the moment is. Travel, oh, traveling seminar. Oh, that wouldn't be it, it's training. Well, if it's traveling seminar, I just have, I can't get that. It says 3,000, $357 remaining. I looked at it wrong.
That's the last thing. That's the last thing. 3,300. That's the last one. That the motion made, so we're going to fill this in on January 6th.
Well, with that in mind, I'd like an adjustment, you know, to find. And if, at this time, girl, I don't know if we can do it, but my part-time budget is got $5,700 a minute and I don't anticipate on hiring anybody part-time this year to make budget.
Without new money? Does TAC, is that TAC training in July? Is that TAC, Texas Association of Counties?
Oh, yes, it is in July, yes it is.
Do they pay for any of that?
They, we pay for this, no.
In other words, they supplement?
It's a hundred dollar, it's a hundred dollar.
Sign up?
Sign up.
Well, they supplement some of my training and some of the clerks' training. You might find out if there's any supplement there, just so you'll know, or if you're responsible for 100% of it. Because you'll have registration fee, meals, lodging, travel.
Registration fee, a hundred dollars and it being in Tyler and it starts at, I believe, eight o'clock, there may be motel for that night.
Okay. All right.
Sound like y'all have enough money out of that part-time. We're just concerned we're going to run out of money and we'll make sure we support that and make sure they can go to all the training. I think it helped that young office get on their feet good. Plus they're going to bring back a lot of new forms and stuff that we're going to learn about. That'd be good, so.
So you feel like you can cover it with your existing budget and moving some money around?
With the, with the, under the part-time, yes. Just for that, for sure.
All right. Remember to ask TAC about whether there's any allowances for anybody in your office. It may be just for you, it may not be for any of you. I don't know.
I'm on call that week. I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to go. I haven't sat with you yet to discuss that Monday or coverage of that day, but.
Okay, so considering the request here, you've heard what he needs. You are in favor of this. Give him the permission to allow his employees to go to these two different mentoring events, utilizing existing money in his budgets, even though it may be from a different line item.
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Fitch to allow this training.
Second.
Who was that? Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you all very much.
Item number six, consider and possibly approve a reserve program for the county attorney's office. We discussed this briefly at our last meeting and made a decision that we're going to reconsider today regarding Marcus Carlock, but as a, as an overview here, Mr. Coburn would like to tell you about what his idea has been. This is not a new idea. He and his office have been thinking and talking about this. But give us an overview of what a reserve program would do for your office.
Basically, what I envisioned was to establish a reserve program. As of right now, I don't have anyone that is willing to be a part of the program. I just wanted to know if it would be established, with the exception of Mr. Carlock. That's a separate issue altogether. I'll speak briefly to that. Mr. Carlock, the district clerk, has to have his, has to maintain his peace officer license and he wanted, he asked me if I had a reserve program, could we carry it under the program, which is, as a professional courtesy would be fine with me. He would do no work for the county attorney's office, so that's a separate issue. He would just simply carry his license with him because he does need to do that in order to maintain his officer license. So that's one thing. The, the issue that I was wanting was to be able to set up a program, because over the years, I've had about two or three different, I think they were all DPS troopers that were retired, that came to me and said, hey, do you have a reserve program? I don't mind helping you out. And I didn't have the program, so we never really pursued it. The issue that we, that we've come across is Paul is the bailiff and he's in the courtroom when we're having court. He helps keep an eye on me. I've got a lot of people, you know, right up on me. We have the county judge, county clerk, all in here. So from a security standpoint, I think the bailiff needs to be focused on bailiff fees. He can't do that and also maintain the metal detector outside. So what we've been doing is utilizing the constable's reserve program. They're not always available. This is the last court in the afternoon, we didn't have anybody, so Paul had to do everything all by himself. And that, in my opinion, creates a security issue. And if we could have the program in place and if someone comes, retires, moves in to the community, wants to do some reserve work, what I'm envisioning is they can come and help us with the. is they could come and help us with the, with the running the metal detector and just provide some additional security. At zero, I, I wanna make clear, I never intended, and I don't want anybody to think that this is gonna cost the county anything. It, the, the benefit they're getting is we're carrying their license with them so they can maintain their peace officer license, in case they wanna go back to work. In return for that, they're gonna come help us out. Now, I understand that the, the constable's office, they have additional vehicles and things, and y'all seen the car Paul drives, barely runs. I mean, I'm not asking for any vehicles or anything like that, so, or, or any expense whatsoever, so it's just simply to provide some additional security. I think somebody probably will come along and wanna do that. Uh, Paul's not gonna be around forever. When he retires, he's stated that he'd, he'd like to do that, uh, help us out, and I think that's, I think it makes sense. And that, that's all I was trying to accomplish. I'm sorry for the confusion about it. Uh, I think the confusion was with the, uh, district clerk, uh, and I understand that it results in confusion. I, I have no intention of him doing any work for my office. He's got his, he's the, he's the district clerk, he's got his own, he's got his own work to do, but he does have to have someone in a law enforcement office like mine carry his license, and otherwise he loses his license in the end. It, most of these guys and gals that get out of the police work, they wanna maintain their licenses. That's a lot of work, schooling, they have to, have to school all over, start from scratch, and they don't wanna have to do that. So I don't mind extending that professional courtesy. So does anybody have any questions?
No, what, what is, these guys wanna keep their peace officer's license. How often they have to go get those renewed? Do they have to be, and how much that costs us?
I, I'm not, I wasn't planning on paying for that. Uh, I wasn't planning on, on my office paying for that, but... So that, that's my thought, and, and I wanted, I know Commissioner Riddle was worried about it, and I appreciate that, worried about it costing the county, uh, extra expenses, and that's not my intent, no, not at all.
We get these jobs, we never be rid of them.
I understand.
It'll be a paying job before long or something.
I understand, uh, once you get it, it's hard to let somebody go once you start a job, I understand that, but this is a little different, Commissioner, this is a, a volunteer program. It's strictly volunteer, and it is, um, alternatively, Commissioner, if we, if we, if we have to bring in and pay people to come do this, secure the courtroom while we're in court, I mean, that costs money, and I'm trying to avoid that. I hope we can find a volunteer. Again, there's nobody, nobody's come knocking and saying, hey, I'm ready, so this may, it may be, maybe a year before, or, you know, or maybe, the first one might be when Paul retires, might be the first one, but I just, I gotta have the program in place or before we can even begin to do it.
And anybody, anybody that would be under a county attorney reserve program would basically serve the county attorney in your security needs, not, not the DA's needs over there. Might he someday ask for a, a district attorney's reserve program for a similar reason?
I, I don't think so, because the sheriff's office is providing some support to them, uh, already. Woody Hughes already does that for them, so he's already in that, in the role. He's, yeah, so they have a part-time employee, Woody Hughes does it.
Okay, thank you for that background. So you, you would like an overall approval for you to develop a reserve program, whatever that looks like, but the key component, components are, these guys would be probably looking for ways to keep their licenses current, so it does them a favor, and they in turn give you some free labor in the form of additional security. Are there any other functions that they might provide?
Yes, uh, the main thing, the, the main thing is the security. That's the number one priority. Secondary, uh, say, which I've had this before, Harold Connors come and, and sit in the office and actually worked on things when Paul was on vacation, uh, things of that nature. So if Paul, my investigator, or, or any employee actually, if he's on vacation, then they could come do some work, and Harold Connors done that. He, he's a reserve for, for the constable, and he's, he's really helped me out over the years. And it's never crossed the county.
What about in, what about in your other roles, not necessarily in county criminal court, but like when you do child protective services, could they serve you as, as additional security there?
Yes, yes. Paul, well, and the bailiff is supposed to handle that, but what happens from time to time, and it happens more, more frequently than what I would like, is we'll have CPS court and the district court will have a court session. Well, can't, can't be at two places at once, or the attorney general's office will have a court, so that's both courtrooms being utilized at the same time. When that's the case, then we have to pull Paul. Sometimes Paul's not available, and it, it puts, it's another potential strength. I wouldn't mind having a couple of people CPS court...
So you could, you could use them in those cases?
Yeah, CPS court can, if something was to happen, uh, that would be the type, that would be a potential place that I could, that something happened, because of the nature of that, those kind of cases. And so it's nice having all the help we can get, but, uh, again, I don't have anybody in mind, uh, I don't know that I'll have anybody, but I gotta have the program in order to be, for that to potentially be based, and I'm hoping somebody will hear about this.
Well, your first possible, we're gonna talk about in the annexed agenda item, and that's reconsidering Marcus Carlock, right?
Yes, sir, uh, that's, that, I can speak briefly about that. I don't, that's not really something that I have, that, my role in that whole situation is Marcus Carlock, regardless of this gun situation, he asked if I would, if I'm gonna have a program, could I carry him, carry his license. I don't have any issues with that. Whether he carries a gun in the district courtroom or not, that, two separate issues. I think we should, I think we should do that for him as a professional courtesy. As we all know, I mean, he may not be in that job, none of us may, you know, we're, we're up for rehire every four years, so I hate to put my law license and lose my law license and, you know, for example, and, uh, and four years later, and, you know, so I understand why he'd wanna keep his license. He was a good, he was a good police officer, I, I can speak to that as well. Uh, I, I reviewed well over a hundred, I'm being conservative, well over a hundred cases in which I've seen him in action on videos and I read his reports. He was a good police officer, he really was, right, so...
But, but even though he's, I guess where I was going with this, even though he may be one of your first guys that's part of your reserve investigator, uh, that, that really is different from what we're talking about here, a reserve program for the county attorney's office, is that different from a reserve investigator for the county attorney? Or would it fall under the same category?
I, I don't, I don't know why it's referred to as a reserve investigator. He's just gonna, I, I just gonna have a reserve program and a reserve deputy that will help primarily do security. I don't, I don't, unless we get somebody like Harold Connor, who, who I, who I really think a lot of, who, as y'all all know, who votes a tremendous amount of time in this county and doesn't get paid a penny, uh, unless we, I'm lucky enough to find another Harold Connor that's willing to do that, uh, I don't think I'll be able to have that much, you know, I would just like for him to show up and help with the security of court mostly.
Okay, all right.
Is, is not do any kind of investigation work, Paul, Paul handles all that.
We're not expecting Marcus Carlock, and we'll talk about that in the next one, to serve as bailiff for court security.
Marcus Carlock will do no work for the county attorney's office. We're just extending a professional courtesy to him so that he can maintain his license. Uh, he's got, he's got to do it somewhere, and I don't have a problem with doing it. He asked me, it's just a professional courtesy, but at no point was there ever a discussion about him coming over here and being available. I, I understand that causes confusion, but that, that is not. The issue that, that, the judges, the district judges told me that they would like for him to be able to carry a firearm in their courtroom, and that's a separate issue that they have requested. He is a certified peace officer and, uh, trained to carry a firearm, and again, um, we all know that our courthouse is, both of these courthouses aren't as secure as some of our, our courthouses that are similar size, we all know that, and so the additional, uh, police force presence, the veterans, is basically the idea behind it. It's just from a security standpoint.
And we'll talk some more about that in the next agenda item. I just wanted them to hear it from you, that you're not expecting him to provide any services for you, specifically Marcus.
And I can try to answer any questions in relation to Mr. Carlock as best I, best I can.
We'll, we'll do that on the next one. All right, do you have any other questions for Mr. Coburn about item number six, which is to establish and approve a reserve program for the county attorney's office?
John Mark, do you have, I mean, is there any, can you have more than one, what I'm trying to say?
Yes, sir.
You can have more than one reserve if, if you need it?
Yes, sir.
With this program? Oh, okay.
And each one, each one will be individually brought to you for your approval or not?
Okay.
Need to be Pam's position?
No, 100% voluntary. I'm, I, I will carry their license, but if they'll, if they'll, if I'm gonna carry their license, they need to volunteer doing the work for them, volunteer. That's, that's what, and it's worth something to them, because they lose, Commissioner, like I said, if they lose that license, they gotta go back to school, they gotta go back to the police academy, start all over, so it's worth it to them to, for somebody to maintain their license. They have a interest in this, so I think that, I think if they're willing to, they're gonna have to agree to help us out. Otherwise, I'm not gonna carry their license if they're not gonna help me out, with the exception of, of the district clerk, that's a different scenario, but I don't envision that being the case with anybody else. I mean, we're, we're, if they're gonna do the program with us, they're gonna have to volunteer sometime. How many hours that is, I haven't thought about it, the details of it, but, uh, we're gonna have to donate some of the time.
All right, good pleasure.
Make a motion when we start the program.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch to approve a reserve program for the county attorney's office.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, John Mark. Item number seven, along that same line, consider and possibly approve Marcus Carlock to serve as a reserve. We have here an investigator for the county attorney. It would just be not, that's really not the right title for it, sounds like. It could just be a, a reserve for the county attorney's office.
What did it say, Sam?
Approve Marcus Carlock to serve as a reserve investigator for the county attorney.
Well, that's part of the confusion right there. He, he's not going to be an investigator, I don't know why it was written that way. Uh, he's not gonna serve as an investigator.
Maybe Paul can explain that, I, you know...
(inaudible) the law, the, uh, the legislature passed, that's what they named it.
Oh, well, thanks.
That is what they, the law, you could read the law, that's what it says, that's what it says. No, still be waiting, it's my call, wait, hold on.
All right, Commissioner Fitch asked me to put that back on the agenda, so Commissioner Fitch, do you have any comments about this? This is an identical item to what we dealt with three weeks ago.
I did get, uh, letters from, uh, Angela Saucieri and Robert Ralston from the 276th District Court and 76th District Court. Judges are for this and they want that in their, their court, so we're not overstepping any bounds by any means, and that's good, so...
Do you mind if I read that?
It could be a good program.
Go ahead. Dear Judge and Commissioners, in our opinion, it would be advantageous to the security of the district courts that the district clerk, Marcus Carlock, be allowed to be commissioned as an unpaid reserve peace officer of Titus County and therefore carry a concealed firearm in all proceedings in the district courts of Titus County. It has been suggested that a conflict of interest may apply with Mr. Carlock being a reserve peace officer while holding the office of Titus County District Clerk. However, this has been addressed in Texas Attorney General Opinion Number 98-035 and is attached, if anyone cares to read that.
I'd like to mention that, Attorney General Opinion. This is not the first time, you would think this is not gonna be the first time this has happened, but it hasn't, this has happened before where a police officer gets elected to...
Yeah, this is a 21-year-old opinion.
And then, in that opinion, the Attorney General said that was appropriate.
Let's go back to that investigator that Paul was talking about. He has to be an assistant investigator or deputy investigator?
What, what, I, I, it was a while back when I read the statute, it was a few months ago, and I forgot that it referred to, but it's just referred to as investigator, but to be clear, and that is confusing, to be clear, that each, each reserve deputy is gonna be called a reserve investigator, because the position that the county attorney has is investigator, so they have to be called a reserve investigator. So, but it doesn't mean they're gonna do any investigation, that's not gonna be the case at all, and, and like I was saying, to make everyone know what there may be any confusion, Marcus Carlock is gonna do no work for the county attorney's office. It's simply a professional courtesy to carry his license, but somebody's got to do it.
Deputy for the county investigator. Deputy means assistant, right, or assistant investigator?
Well, he's gonna, he would, he would, he would help Paul, and what, what we're talking about, how he's gonna help Paul is to provide security outside the courthouse, and if someone's on vacation, for example, Paul's on vacation, maybe they could come up and set, you know, help us out while Paul's on vacation, but not investigate, I'm not envisioning the person investigating, doing any kind of Paul's investigation.
We're gonna have to creating another position?
No, no.
And then we call the deputy investigator?
No, no, there will not be another position created. I'm telling you, I assure you, there will be no position created. I don't need another police officer. I have a police officer, that's Paul England, I don't need another one. I would just like the, the ability to have somebody to help, help us out, for free.
Extra security.
Extra, that's really the key. I, I wanna stress, the issue is security. The issue is security. I can't say that enough.
Is he gonna carry this in his office or just gonna have, just keep the license? Because I've had issues, people, they don't want him to carry the gun in the, uh, his office, because in the district clerk's office, they don't, they don't want him to carry the gun, and people that, he shouldn't be able to carry the gun in district clerk's office. You know, I, I just don't think that, in my opinion, he don't, you know, he can carry it anywhere else, but not in the, I don't think he should carry it in the district clerk's office.
I'd like to hear some more comments on that. Why is that an issue, rather than a plus?
Well, like, you know, people are saying, well, that'd be the first office, somebody comes in and shoots somebody, so they're gonna have the gun there, and, you know, Deborah was there for, what, 20 years, she never had a gun inside the office, but I don't, my opinion is, you know, I don't, I agree that he could be a, a reserve, but I just don't think he, you know, he can carry...
I, I understand, Commissioner, this is my, this is my personal opinion.
Right.
You know, when, when, when the law changed and the open carry law became effect, in effect, I took the position that I don't, I don't have a problem with open carry. I don't have a problem with concealed carry. If someone wants to carry in my office, I'll allow them. Now, that was a decision I made. I know the district attorney's office took a different position, they said, no, if you have a, if you have the ability to carry openly, we don't want, we don't allow them to do that. So it's a personal, I, I'm the new position.
But I don't, I don't mind.
I, I think the, the issue is security, and that's the issue. You go to cash, you go to Henderson, you try to enter their courtroom, any time, any time, you're gonna have to go through that, you're gonna see at least one armed guard at all times.
Oh, that's...
We don't have that, and so the idea behind the security is the more police presence, the better, and that's the idea, and, uh, without, because we're not extending those resources to provide additional security, and another, another kind of, the idea behind the security is that, and he is, I'm confused. 15, 20 years, we're talking about in Sweden, across.
Right, I understand.
Now, he's been in the coffee business for a few years.
Yes, well, no, let's...
And I think that might...
Well, as far as the courthouse, I don't have the issue with that, it's just that, you know, that's, people come to me, said, you know, it was, the situation might escalate, because, you know, he's in his office and has a gun, they're gonna go in there and, or they go towards the, if somebody knows there's a gun there, they're gonna go to the person with the gun first. You got a gun, you'll be shot.
So are you saying that, so I'm just clear, you're saying that, um, while, if I'm, if I'm gonna go in and get a passport?
Right.
At the, at the clerk's office, you're saying you would prefer Mr. Marcus Carlock to not carry a firearm?
Inside, in his office.
In his office.
Yes.
But in the courtroom?
Yes, in, yes, I agree with that, yes, yes. Yes, yes, I agree with that. Yes, yes, yes. That's what I'm saying. He could, anywhere in security, that's fine. That's what, you know, people have been talking to me about, like I said, but other than the courthouse, he could carry it anywhere he wanted to. But that's, that's not the issue. That was just in the, in the office.
I understand.
So anywhere else, I, you know, there's no, no problem.
I understand.
So that would be part of your approval, is that you would say you can't wear a gun anytime you walked out of that courtroom?
I don't have a problem with carrying a gun. I think he'll be fine all the time.
I, I was going to say, we can't have one N.
That's his decision. Yep. Sounds good.
No, I'm glad you clarified that.
No, we appreciate your input.
Yeah, I didn't know that. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that, so.
Any other questions about this particular issue here, considering and possibly approving Marcus Carlock to serve as reserve investigator for the county attorney?
I make a motion, we approve.
Motion is made by Commissioner Riddle to approve Marcus Carlock as reserve investigator for county attorney.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Coburn, for coming and telling us about that. All right. Item number eight was a tabled matter that we wanted a few more weeks to think about this. You had Chief Isbell here three weeks ago to present to you the new animal control contract that is an annual contract with automatic annual renewals. And so you will recall, there was a fee increase, a few thousand dollars, as well as a new one-time-per-year $5,000 charge for miscellaneous supplies, et cetera, to be utilized there in our new animal control facility. Chief needs our up or down vote so that he can prepare his budget, and has asked that this be done by us by the end of May. I told him I would have it on this agenda.
I have one question. That $5,000, I didn't understand it that way. Somebody asked him that they could change that each year. They could ask for more or less.
Well, that, that automatic contract, that automatic renewal, they would have to come back to us and tell us about that if he's going to change that. I mean, you don't automatically renew a contract and just throw a change in there.
Oh, that's just contracts just for one year that we're.
Well, it's one year at a time. Now, if he needs to come back, just like, we've had that contract in effect for several years and it's automatically renewed, but there's been no changes to it. Now that he's made changes to it, he's got to come and tell us before we automatically renew it. So he can't just throw a change in there without coming to us.
I make a motion that we approve the contract.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch to approve. I'll second that motion. All in favor of approving the renewal of the animal control contract with the city to be effective October 1, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One? Is that just one opposed? Anybody else opposed?
No.
Okay. All right. Motion passes. Item number nine, discuss the selection of our auditor for the 2018-19 county audit. That'll be for the year ended September 30th of this year. Carl, what do we need to consider on this? Pull that mic over there, would you? Maybe we ran out of battery. Would you grab that other one and I'll, or if you'll bring me that one, I'll get us a new battery.
All the time I've been here, Lanny and them have done this audit every year. But we have gone out, we've got proposals in the past. This last contract, it was for a three-year period with the option to renew for two more years, and we did it for two more years. So it lasted five years. Happy to go out to proposals from other people. We did that in the past. We didn't want to do it at the same time, basically, three years. We're happy to do it a year. I'd love to do it. I'd go out and.
We've got three new commissioners since we last approved a three-year contract. Tell them about the pros and cons of changing an auditor, why it would be a good idea to, to change auditors, and then what some of the practical obstacles that we ran into when we tried to do that.
The, the, the idea of changing auditors is to get different people that haven't looked at it before. You have a different set of eyes. They might see something or notice something different that nobody else, the other officer didn't see or notice or asked a question about. That's the good part about it. The bad part about it, not really a bad part, is the fact we only have one firm in the area that can do all the work. So, you know, you're, you'd be sending them work out of town. That's not necessarily a bad thing, but that's what you'd be doing. The firms that do this, when we checked last time, by the prices, you weren't saving any money. Money was not the object. It would just be a different set of eyes to look at because you've got to pay them to come to town. You've got to pay their travel expenses and those kind of things. The prices we had last time, Arnold and Walker, I'm just going to go over the first year. All of them escalated a little bit each year because they had a clause inside them to build it up. But Henry and Peters out of Tyler was 31.5. Arnold and Walker and Arnold was 27.850. Conway Company, I believe they're out of Greenville, was 27. Patello and Brown, I believe they're out of Waco, was 36,000. And Whitley Penn didn't really answer. But you can see the prices, there's not a lot of difference.
Were those prices, that, that was not accounting travel, as I recall.
It does not include the travel. No, no. All of them didn't have. Well, it did include, the travel was included on Patello and Brown, and their price was 36,000. Henry and Peters at 31.5, the travel, they estimated the travel to be $1,000 to $1,500. And Conway, the travel was included. They were about the same price as Arnold and Walker. But we stay with Arnold and Walker. So, I mean, you can make those options, decisions, once I get some quotes in, but I need to know if you want to bid it for three years or two years or, or tell you I want to do it, and that's the way I'll put it.
Well, either way, do, do we have to bid this?
It's not really a bid because it's a professional service and it's not $50,000 going out for proposals. So we just get proposals.
One option would just be, we just say, hey, Arnold Walker, Arnold, give us a price for the next three years and not even talk to any of these others. The other would be to do what we did five years ago and send them a letter, would you like to make a proposal here?
That's right. If you want to do that, again, I need to know if you want to do it for two years, three years.
I think you ought to do it for, for three years.
Yeah.
Whoever you hire, you ought to commit to a three-year run, just to make sure.
It's going to take a little while to get, know our system, the different options.
I think, I think it comes down to, do you feel like there's some pros to be gained by soliciting out-of-town business? The cons are you, you're sending business out of, out of town.
The answer's probably going to cost a little bit more.
It will cost a little bit more.
I like the Arnold and Walker setup that we got. I'd like to make a motion to give them a three-year and keep them.
Did you ask them for a three-year proposal? Is how you ought to do it? Because you want to.
Oh, just need to ask them?
Yeah, you need to ask.
You want them to commit to those three years of pricing.
Right.
Okay.
And then, and then we would approve that price.
Okay, after we.
And you wouldn't necessarily approve it. I mean, if they came in and told you, okay, it's going to be $50,000 a year, you'd not decide that.
Yes, I know.
So how about we add to, how about we modify that? You would propose that we, we request a proposal from Arnold Walker and Arnold for a three-year proposal and maintain the right to solicit other proposals if we don't like their price? Because I'd like to be able to go to some of these other companies if we feel like they've gotten out of hand in comparison to where they've been.
Okay.
I will, I will say this too. I, of course, I think a lot knew I was planning on retiring anyway, so I have, I have sent the judges my letter, and I'm going to retire October 1st, so there'll be a new auditor that they'll be dealing with anyway. Of course, I'll be around, and I told them I'd be around to help anything they could help.
So that, that could be potentially a, a bumpy first year.
Right. Because you have a new auditor and a new auditor. So, yeah, you could have. But.
You said you'd be around.
I'd be around. I'll help them with anything. I'm not going anywhere. I still have, I'm not retiring for any of that.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Riddle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Item number 10, consider and possibly proclaim May 12 through 18, that's the week that we are in right now, as Titus Regional Medical Center Week. This is something that they've worked on there at the hospital, and they contacted me and asked, would we be willing to do this? And this is being done by other municipalities here in town, just to promote awareness of our wonderful county hospital. Let me read you this. Whereas the county of Titus recognizes National Hospital Week is May 12 through 18. That's a national deal. This is not just something unique here. And whereas individuals all across the country will be celebrating this time-honored event, and whereas Titus Regional Medical Center plays a vital role in the health and well-being of our community and the hard-working individuals who make up Titus Regional Medical Center deserve universal regard and appreciation for keeping our community healthy. Be it known that on this 14th day of May, that's going to be tomorrow, I, Judge Brian Lee, along with the Titus County Commissioners' Court, do hereby declare May 12 through 18, 2019, to be Titus Regional Medical Center Week in Titus County, Texas, and urge the residents to express their appreciation for the people, facilities, and technology that make trustworthy, reliable health care possible in our community. This will be presented to the CEO, Terry Scoggan, tomorrow at a brief recognition ceremony there at the hospital in the main front foyer at 9:00 AM tomorrow. So they're asking not only for our participation today in signing this declaration, but also would like to have one person there in attendance tomorrow to present this, if possible. I've got court starting at 9 o'clock. If I have to be late to it, I will. If there's one of you that would be willing to hand this to Terry Scoggan and give him a thank you at 9:00 AM tomorrow, I would sure appreciate it. But let's cover that second. Let's decide about signing this document for starters.
Make a motion, we sign the document.
Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite that we proclaim this week as Titus Regional Medical Center Week. Second, Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I've already asked Commissioner Fitch, and he is not available tomorrow. Would there be anybody else that might be available at 9:00 AM tomorrow?
I will.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'll get you this signed document, and we'll get you a reminder call tomorrow. If you could be in the front foyer, say maybe 5:00 or 10:00 till 9:00. They have assured me you'll be done by 9:15. It won't be a lengthy, drawn-out deal. And you will simply hand this to him and say, Titus County recognizes our excellent hospital and says, thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right. Did we vote? I've already forgotten. We got motion and a second, and we voted. All right, let's get signatures on this so that we can get it to Commissioner Riddle. Item number 11, consider and possibly award a bid for repairs to the courthouse steps. As you'll recall, we had Glenn Calvert and his crew put together a lengthy set of working drawings and description of work to be performed. We advertised this here locally in our paper. Glenn Calvert mentioned the job to specific individuals in this community to be sure that they were aware of this job. And with all of that, we have one proposal. It is a proposal from a Fort Worth company that I have read about and talked to, as well as Glenn Calvert did some research on them and says they have the knowledge and experience to do a job like this. I asked him, why did we not get any more interest here locally? And he gave me his opinion on a couple of contractors. And it could be that they were not willing to go through the bonding process in order to do a job like this. It could be that they were too busy. It could be that they didn't feel qualified. We don't have, we didn't talk to any of them individually, but we do know that they knew about the work. Specifically, one contractor was one that does all of Prefort's concrete work. But they knew about the work, they didn't bid, we didn't get any other in, well, we had another two inquiries, but this is the only one that stepped up and said, I'm willing to put a bid in. I have looked at it because it was not, because it was the only one that we had, and this was not a situation where I was going to be revealing a price to somebody else, but I did want Glenn Calvert to know about this, and I did want to talk to the fellow that provided this proposal and make sure that it covered everything that I needed for him to cover. So let me tell you a little bit about this proposal. This proposal is broken down into Part 1 and Part 2. One is for the demolition and the rebuilding of the steps themselves. And then Proposal Number 2 is to apply that special coating to all four entrances to prevent further water damage in the future. And they did bid on both of these, and so here is their proposal. This comes from, what is the name, Mobile Enterprises Incorporated. They've got a nice website. They've been doing this kind of specialty concrete demo and rebuild for quite some time. So Part 1 and Part 2. Part 1, scope of work, that is the demo and rebuilding of the stairs, where they're going to completely remove the stairs and the upper landing, as well as the support underneath, and replace it with all brand-new. Their price, $95,665. $95,665. Project duration from start to finish, 25 working days. He did make it clear to me that with current tariffs in effect, just getting steel is a challenge at this point. So he said there will be some delay before we actually show up and begin work if we are approved. Said, I just want you to know that upfront. Part 2, and that is the sealing with the special material, the tacky material that also had sealant properties, lump sum, $18,431. That was a 10-day job. He is hoping that they can shorten that, and if he's given a full weekend to work or as many days as they can without interruption, they felt like they could close down maybe two entrances at once or knock them all four out over a weekend. He's also bid ancillary work items that Mr. Calvert asked for in the event that they did any damage to our other sidewalks, et cetera. So he's broken all of that down on an individual price to remove and replace sidewalk or backhoe operators, skid steer operators, dump truck drivers, if there's some reason that they have to do ancillary work not related to this project. So $95,665, or roughly $113,000. So $95,665, or roughly $113,000 to do this. When I asked Glenn what he had anticipated, he was a little low on one, a little high on the other, but his expected price was higher than what this total is. So he was expecting a six-figure job. Mobile Enterprises, the one and only price that we have gotten, so we either accept that or we start over.
I make a motion, we accept it.
Thank you. Motion's made by Commissioner Riddle to award this work to Mobile Enterprises out of Fort Worth at individual prices, Joyce, of Part 1, $95,665, and Part 2, $18,431.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's a biggie, but one that we've gotta do. Thank you. Item number 12, approve oral and written reports of officials. I've gotta step out here real quick.
(laughing) 2020. 2020. 2020. His retirement date.
I did have to stop you off that, so I see what the judge is saying.
No, we need this.
Make a motion, we approve the report?
Second.
Is he coming right back?
He said he was just gonna step out by phone call.
We need to wait on it.
I think to talk to y'all about a couple of things.
Okay. Just wait then. He's coming back.
You didn't mention anything about.
No, I was waiting you get back in. I've got two things I want to talk to you about.
All right. Y'all ready to make a motion on this? Any questions?
Make a motion?
You made the motion, motion to approve these reports. And second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
While we're on this agenda, I had a couple of things I needed to touch base with y'all on. One is a, it may just be a misunderstanding in our office. I got a, I got an invoice from Higginbotham for $500 that's consulting on the ACA reporting, which is the 1095 forms you have to send out to all the employees showing how much insurance coverage they had, so they can do the factor terms. I wasn't in the meetings, but some of y'all were, and Annette and Kristi were in the meetings when our office's understanding was that they were not going to charge us for the 1095 stuff. Now, we've already paid $500 or $580 to have them printed, but when this bill came in, it kinda caught us off-guard. Maybe something y'all were paying, y'all was understanding of what the, of what they were supposed to charge us, maybe, you know, ain't that any different to what Kristi and Annette's understanding was, but.
I don't remember.
Anyway, we talked to them, we didn't, we told them we didn't think we should pay the bill, but it's really not our call, it's y'all's call.
Who did you talk to?
We talked to, talked to Toni.
When I received the bill, I thought the $580 was the $500. So I called her because I thought I could just bill the sheriff. And she said, no, this is the additional cost. And I said, well, in the meeting and what Kristi had informed me when they said at the table, they questioned that additional cost. And at the time, they said, no, you're not gonna be billed that. And Sheriff even held our 1095 trying to clarify that because we thought we weren't supposed to pay it. And then Carl said, no, pay the $580 for the processing. And I'm like, okay, that's the bill we're paying, is the $580. So then when we received that and when I was talking to Ms. Milton, she said, no, y'all were responsible for that. And I said, well, I thought you were waiving your fee, but we understood that there was this additional cost of the processing fee. And so she, in the conversation, said, okay. So I told her after the conversation, I need to let Carl know that this isn't a missed billing, that this is an actual bill, and then Carl said it would be the court's decision whether to pay the bill or not. Of course, she told me at the time, her opinion of it was that it was part of the contract, that she would waive it now, but I, I really can't.
Is this something that we'll get every year? How much longer will we have to do this?
You know, I don't know with 1095s, how much longer. There's no penalty anymore for not having the insurance, but I haven't seen anything talking about doing whatever the requirements do.
Are there any penalties for not doing the filing?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Unless they, unless they change it, they are, yeah.
A lot of people on the back lawn, they're like, once I get some of that, they're totally gonna get it out. Just use the full data that I get from this recording now. It's an article about, according to the mandate, people didn't do any work out for years. A lot of times, they get to the back. So even if you don't have the mandate, some of the industry executives, 1095, they still be here. If you make a change.
Well, we may, we may win this battle this year and get them to waive it in the future. Is this something we feel like we can do or do we need their services?
Well, I'm not sure exactly what services. I, I have to ask Sharon exactly what they did there.
Well, there was something about Tony about the EDI update and we're supposed to be able to enter this and it goes through the system and that wasn't working. And she kind of explained to me, we have a lot of problems in collecting and completing the data, where the data needs to be, this outside company, the processing forms, because the system we have downstairs wasn't working and was like a double injury. Sheriff, like, if I had to enter a year, why do I want to enter it there in the system? I think that worked this year on that process, so it should. That's about that third-party company this year, this next year. Her Tony on the phone, some of the EDI records, or he's in remission, maybe he did this.
Why don't you let me talk this over with Tony? I may get Sharon on the phone with me and ask them, is this something that?
I mean, it's not a large, it's not a big amount of my.
Well, I wanna know if they, if they ever, if she remembers saying, you will pay this, or if she says, oh, well, we just assumed you'd pay it. I, I'd like them to know. I don't think.
She told me, she said that it was part of the contract. I made some eye on my first meeting with Sheriff and said, it wasn't, it was contract. So she, you know, that's why I told her that I need to get the call. If you feel it's part of the contract, then I need to call, but they not, they thought it was a $580.
Well, is this part of the bills that we're getting ready to approve?
No.
No. Okay. Let me discuss it with them and you all will trust me to make the right call on this. It's $500. If she feels like they adequately informed us, I think we need to pay it, but we also need to be prepared. Whatever we agree to this year, probably going to agree, have to agree to it annually in the future unless we decide we don't need their help. Again, I don't remember enough about this. So let me talk with her.
The, the second thing I need to talk to y'all about is the.
Pull that mic over, would you?
Yeah. Is this working? Okay. Couple of months ago, we, we talked about doing the random drug testing.
With a third-party company?
With a third-party company, yes. I told y'all that Annette, since she did that over at Camp County, would be glad to do it, and she's still glad to do it. But what we ran into is we, we don't actually have a signed contract with those people. So I need to get, I guess I need to get to you, Judge, and you need to look it over and we need to fill it out and actually sign the contract. And then the second thing that came up is when we were talking to the TAC people the other day, they indicated that if you're going to put in this random drug testing policy, you have to have a policy, a county policy, and I'm not sure we actually have a written county policy. I'm sure TAC can help us write that policy. But as part of that policy, you're not just doing random drug testing, you're also supposed to be observing your people and if you are under the impression that this person is on drugs or, or has been drinking or something, you can, you don't have, you don't have to wait for a random drug test, you're supposed to send them down there right away to be drug tested. Now, as part of that, in order for you to make that determination, y'all are supposed to be, go to, I think it's a one-hour class, but we've got to show that you went to the class and got certified and know how to identify properly whether somebody needs to go get an immediate test. Now, I'm sure all this has to do with somebody somewhere.
Well, is that what this, is that what this training at the AgriLife Extension Office is on the 23rd?
Yeah.
DOT Substance Abuse Training and DOT Reasonable Suspicion Training at the AgriLife Extension Office?
Right. But what I'm telling you is that as part of the, as part of the policy, part of having this system in place, we're gonna have to have, apparently the four commissioners have to go to that if they're going to have anything to do with it.
Anyone that is in the, the supervisory position of these roadhands has to go through this training.
Okay.
That was what those folks told us when, you know, and, and if I'm not mistaken, Carl, there's a policy, our policy is in there. We have.
I believe I said it's not an issue, so I went to TAC to get it done. Because when this was given to me, I thought the contract was already in place. I contacted that and started the drug testing pool. And at that time, I was told, you don't have a contract in place. So I went through the contract, I got this TAC, I got the 15 points, so that we would have the information on, on the policy. And in our handbook, it says, CDLC Audit Resolutions for Policy. That's what's in the handbook. So I wanted to make sure the Audit Resolutions had a copy of the policy that would be in place, so I could check the box just to that. Then I, I'll tell you, in the steps I took, was that's when I contacted the County Attorney 's office because I had no one to review the policy, the contract. And that's when he informed me that that's not his role. So I got to Carl and said, we refuse our contract. Before I submitted it to the judge to be signed, we had to have the training, we had the policy, we had to have the contract we need for the terms. So I went to Carl, because I, I went ahead and established the training, because it can always be canceled, but we needed to get it on there. But it was working, but then I was trying to get them before they got any of the roadwork and go ahead and get it booked. So I asked the guy to that and I pulled the policy and I got to Carl and Carl said, you probably review your own contract. I was just going from prior experience that I thought I had one of them, so I didn't have that. So that's why I'm proceeding here and using this today.
But you have a policy that, that will be referenced when the CDL driver.
There's a policy in here.
Yeah, there, in the handbook, it says, CD Audit Resolutions for Policy. I could not find it, so I got the TAC and had the 15 points. So I would at least check the box and say, yes, we have a meeting.
Yeah, but I think as part of the proc, as the procedure, you're gonna have to review and approve this policy and the contract.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's gonna have to be done.
Have you got multiple copies of that? Of that policy?
Then this policy.
Is this the policy here?
Right.
I'll have to get y'all.
Well, I'd like to see, I'm happy to review it, I just wanna see, I want the commissioners to see this policy so that they can explain it to their guys.
Right.
And if you, and if you wanna, and if you wanna post the copies of this, you're worth your, you're a good idea.
Is that the, is that the policy?
Pass any of this information of the points that are necessary for a CDL policy, or whoever formulates a policy for Todd County, because we'll get this documentation in terms of this party to say, you know, to put in your hands, in my title. So you can put the hublight in here, like, pass it, or you can go through it and say, this is a necessary, we want this, so that we can, I mean, I'll, it says, the extended policy is in Audit Resolutions, because we're giving to everybody exactly what.
Let's put this on the next agenda item, approve the policies.
That she said to refuse to be given, it's not true. I mean, all the different components that she had, that could be devised together on the policy.
Did you check with the DOT if the guys had to be trained to send a guy to get?
I have a request for the legal ruling pertaining to the legality of the necessity of the IED on, and that's your, Sheriff.
I'd like to know.
So that we can provide, we have to see what the legal ruling is on, for our bill to bring back to the law.
I just can't believe that a dispatcher can't send a guy to get a drug test. I mean, it just, he has to have training before he can send a guy to get a drug test. That's what you're saying to me. I just can't, I just can't believe that the DOT would require it, but as Carl said, they might have put that law in since I was.
I'm not making a broad point for you guys to be the actual witnesses.
Yeah, I, 'cause I can't, I just can't believe that I don't have the authority as an employer to send a guy to get a drug test without me having to be trained to just send him. I mean, I can't see that. It may be there.
Well, I mean, I'm gonna get the information, the training, and I think County, there's no law, and the, and the, so even if some people might not, smart people saying, no, we shouldn't make that, I mean, we're gonna.
We have to approve it.
We haven't approved it, but we got it.
We gotta approve it next week, next two weeks. Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna sign this contract. I thought we'd sign this contract, too.
The, I don't think the contractors ever signed. The girl said that when we filled that out, that she would be more than glad to help us fill it out if they be, and so I. I don't think, I, I don't think they have. I don't think we ever sent it back in to them to.
She said, wasn't, wasn't exact enough. I'm like, if you send me one, so I know. And I thought it was a simple thing.
We just.
Since I have nothing to do with it, I'm not getting through these questions. I don't know how y'all are planning on doing this. This is just a contract, contract.
Yeah, of course, I changed the property contract to June before we did this, but.
Well, now, that's the first proposal that they sent us, that, that has got my name and all in it. The other one right there, I think that Brian's got, is the one that, I think it's the one that they sent.
So is this just stuff that my office, I'm filling?
Yes, I think so. I mean, that's.
And I'll sign it.
I think that I have to be on the.
Why does it have to be on the agenda? We've already approved, we're contracting with this company. I don't think there's any sensitive decisions in there, not looking at it, it's just contact information. I don't think, I don't think they have. I don't think we ever sent it back in to them to...
She said, "Well, the exact, I'm like, if you send me one, so I know." And I thought it was a simple thing.
We just accept...
We may put it all in the file. Since I have nothing to do with it, I'm not going to answer these questions. I don't know how y'all are planning on doing this. It's just a contract, contract.
Well, now, that's the first proposal that they sent us, that it's got my name and all in it. The other one right there, I think that Brian's got, is the one that, I think it's the one that they sent you.
So, is this just stuff that my office, my village offices...
Yes, I think so. But that's...
And then I'll sign it. Why does it have to be on the agenda? We've already approved, we're contracting with this company. I don't think there's any sensitive decisions in there, not looking at it as just contact information in delivery of the data. I'll get the policies on the next agenda, and this is, this is your copy here. You got mine. And that goes back to that. The third item pertaining to the contract, I think, that is for the commissioners to decide, is whether they want to be part of the consortium, or whether they want to generate their own pool. He said, "Like, between people, when we get up to about 20 people, their pool, they can pull out their own pool of people instead of going with the consortium." Because of the number of employees we have, we also have to make that selection.
But we, we made that selection when we decided to go with this company, to go with the...
Like, if organized, full, just like, you need to be in the pool of a consortium, like a lot of people, or you can have a pool of just your people. If it's just your people, they will be pulled in.
More, we...
You go a year and not have a person in the full consortium, I mean, so you just need to, I need to check the box. That matter of fact. Consortium is what we're talking about.
Yes, that's what we talked about, was because, because they, that way, they're not called as often, that's where we don't have to worry about doing it as often because of...
There's your answer.
Yeah, and it, it might be three or four years before one of our people is called, unless y'all sent somebody.
Yes, possibility. And that's, that's what that training is for, is for us to determine that ourselves.
Can you say, in fact, that I did have a person that was called three times this year, and when we got to the third mile, I put it in dispute, I said, "If we're going to consortium help this person, I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit with this person again." This is kind of...
And that's...
And that you did already.
That is our prerogative to do that.
So, I mean, when it comes to... Cheryl, that's your report.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we'll have that approval of that policy on next agenda.
About when you, about this special driver's license to operate a governor vehicle, can you show me where it says, "We got to have random drug test on those drivers"? Is there somewhere the DOT, or can this lady that won't return my calls, Ms. Cecil, will she tell you that? I'd like to know where it is on, in the book. I don't think, I don't think you have to have random drug test if you have, your drivers have that government license, driver's license.
Jimmy might hold that, he was the best to start with.
The way that, that I found out about this was that, that, I don't remember now what county it was, I may have it out there at the office, but it, they, they come back on somebody and checked them, and the county had not been doing random drug testing. And according to DOT, anybody with a CDL license has to be drug testing.
That's right. Unless you've got a government license, the one that we can get these, our employees don't, aren't required to have a CDL, keep a logbook and all that kind of stuff, if they have, don't, if they have a government license, and they issue the government license, you can go down there and ask them at DOT. You can only drive a government vehicle, and you can, and that's all you have to do. And you don't have to have...
And researching that, when we were speaking the other day, I researched that before, the requirement for the medical exam that the DOT requires for all CDL drivers, that is what is not required for county CDL. That's the only thing it exempts you from. They get an exemption for the medical, so say somebody had a, had some kind of a heart attack or something, and they no longer drive D O W R O, it would not prevent them from driving for a county, because they don't have to pass the medical exam.
But they did, but they did have to do the drug testing?
Yeah, the drug testing has nothing to do with that exemption. That exemption is because some CDL drivers get put home out because of the medical restriction, they can't drive for DMG law, but they can drive locally, or specific organizations, they can drive for counties and things, because they're not in the long haul, and their medicals, because I have a medical, I have a medical, and I believe that that is the exemption that you're referring to. I did research that.
I'm aware of that. That, that's not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
I'm talking about random drug tests.
And they have, we were asking about legal, and they're speaking, I asked for a copy of that to be submitted to us, that I could apply.
I meant from the...
A report of exactly what the law...
I'm talking about from the DOT, the log group from the DOT.
She's got to see if she can find it.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm working on reading that.
Make a motion, we take the report.
Motion made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any budget amendments?
Yes, sir. This is number nine through number seventeen. Number nine is just, every April, we start going through and kind of cleaning up, this is just line item changes inside the general fund. It's no new money at all. Number 10, we originally transferred $900,000 out of the general fund over to Fund 19 for all that equipment we were going to buy. We only bought $500,000 out of that equipment, so I moved $400,000 of the money back into General County, and that's what that budget amendment is. Number 11 was a, is an emergency budget amendment, because we needed some gas and oil and repairs and maintenance inside that Fund 19 for some of that equipment, especially One Piece, that we just had to spend some money on, I think it was seven, eight thousand dollars. So, I had to put some money in there for repairs and gas and oil. The money's in there, it just wasn't budgeted, so that's why it's an emergency budget. That's number 11.
Twenty-five, seventy-five.
Yeah, thirty, well, there was some already in there. I put 25,000 in repairs and 7,500 in gas and oil. So, it's 32,500. Emergency budget amendment number 12 is for the new bank frame computer that we bought. We didn't have that budgeted. It's 45,885. And that just came out of contingency, basically, but I treat it like an emergency budget.
Aye.
Right. Right, the cloud, yes. Number 13 is putting the loan proceeds in Precinct 1, and then putting the money into road materials and capital outlay from the loan proceeds. Number 14 is doing the same thing in Precinct 2, putting the loan proceeds in and then putting the money in capital outlay from General County. That's right. Number 15 is the loan amount put in Precinct 3. Number 16 is the loan amount put in Precinct 4. And then the last one, number 17, we got that limited property tax settlement, I budgeted some of the funds, but I need to finish budgeting all the rest of the monies that we got in the works, but I must go up to the IRS accounts and then General County and the jury. That's it. Thank you, everybody, seeing all those who said we were...
I might get motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Parker.
Oh, Parker said that.
Yes, second.
And seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. Motion, Commissioner Parker, second Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let me get these signed.
Make motion with payer bill.
Motion's made to do so by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, closing comments. I wanted to bring to your attention, let me see what I wrote down here. Isaac Garcia, who is our risk control consultant with TAC, they are coming to town with some training here that was mentioned briefly. I would like to get over to Titus County to provide DOT training as soon as possible. As I understand, the county has not completed its contract with a drug testing provider, as the contract stipulates that the county must provide this training before testing begins. Here's how the training would look. This is May 23rd, start at 7:00 in the morning, DOT Substance Abuse Training for one hour. This is for all CDL drivers who drive a commercial vehicle for the county and for all supervisors of CDL drivers. We'll cover different types of drugs and alcohol, symptoms of abuse, where drivers go for help, testing requirements, and driver rights. Then, from 8:10 to 9:30, DOT Reasonable Suspicion Training. This is for supervisors of CDL drivers. We will discover, we will cover how substances affect drivers, when they can be tested, what constitutes reasonable suspicion, and the documentation required for these reasonable suspicion determinations. So, that's important stuff for us. Any department can attend this if they also want to know more about identifying, identifying somebody that they think may be under the influence, so other departments could attend this. That will be May 23rd, and that is a Thursday, I recall, and that'll be at the Ag Extension Office, 7:00 to 9:30. And I think that is it, as far as my comments. I will let you know when we think that course house step renovation can begin, but it will likely be a few weeks at least. I think that's all I've got. Commissioner Parker?
I didn't get anything, too.
Okay. Commissioner Applewhite? Commissioner Fitch?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Riddle?
Oh, sure.
Yes, please, thank you.
We're over in your area, again, today, get your route. We got yours. Hey, Dana, did you still want us to do the potholes on the road you sent me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to try to get that this week, and after that, Jimmy, it's your turn again. So, you want us to do potholes, or you want us to do trash?
Uh...
You just think about it, we got this week, if I can get two crews out, I'm going to get you this week, too, but you two guys, next time I hit Precinct 1 and 2 pretty heavy, so I'm going to get you guys, so...
Okay.
What I'll leave for you, Dana, we'll just get your guys, I'll call you, and I'll just leave the truck out. We got our own shovels and rigs, all we need is just a truck.
Truck.
And we've loaded up, we have the hot mix loaded up.
I'll get hot mix over today.
Okay, I'll get with you. Just think about it, Jimmy, and what I need you this week, to let you guys know where...
I'll let you know.
How long you been, how long you been doing this?
Well, we, we've had a good year. We've hit Precinct 1, well, actually, we've got theirs, too. We've been able to get a crew out since it's been warming up the work.
How big's a crew typically?
We've, we've got, sometimes we'll have three, three inmates out, three inmate workers out. This week, since it's going to be so nice, I may try to get a female crew out again and do trash while we've got a male crew doing the potholes, or vice versa. No females did the potholes with us last year, did a good job. So, we'll just, yeah, we'll just see what we got, and I'm going to try to, because if we can use our truck for the trash, and then I have to have their truck to do the potholes. But, but, yeah, it worked out real good last year, we got a lot done with the mixers last year on the potholes and trash. This year, we've got a lot of roads picked up. I mean, it's, we've gotten a lot done, these, these guys...
Take me some pictures of that, and I mean, I didn't know about this.
Oh, yeah.
That's a good story, I think...
We put it on our Facebook, Sheriff's Office, the citizens love it, and because cleaning the roads.
I think Tracy, Tracy with the paper would like to see something like that, hear something about that.
Okay, yeah. But, but, yeah, I'm going to get my road crews going again before we're filling in the potholes. So, and I know John and I have a truck free, by the time we get Dana's and Jimmy's done, when they get Al's chip ceiling done, they probably start, but then after y'all get done later on in the summer, just let me know, and we'll, we'll start doing potholes for you two.
No, we'll have pass trucks ready, pretty much all the time.
All right, we'll get y'all, let me get, we spent a lot of time in y'all's area, and so it's their turn again. Let me get these two guys here in y'all's area.
Let me get with you before you leave. I want to throw something at you, too, about that.
Okay.
We also have some helping for, I had a guy picking up trash for community service hours, and he picked up 1905 and stuff away, so it helps a lot, too.
Yeah, 1905's long, too.
Yeah, in 1905, 1820, he picked them up in 1905.
Okay.
But I appreciate, appreciate what the Sheriff Department does.
Yeah, appreciate.
That's great, that's great. Okay, and then just lastly, as a reminder, public notice, the commissioners will attend this DOT Substance Abuse Training on that Thursday, the 23rd. No action will be taken, so just making, making you aware that the commissioners will be gathered together, but no business transacted on that day. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Motion, Commissioner Parker, second Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.